Well, at least we have enough board members to go ahead and call this meeting to order. So I'll, I'll go ahead and formally call our meeting to order. This is November 22nd, 2024 Friday. It is 1:03 PM. We'll officially call our meeting to order. Thanks, everybody for joining us today virtually. Good to see all of you, my board colleagues, Superintendent Dr. Stubblefield, to all of our staff that are joining online and any guests that we might have. Thanks for joining us on a Friday afternoon for our special board meeting today. As we do at every board meeting, I'll read our board norms and protocols. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, good afternoon. Thanks for joining us, everyone. And with that, Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen. I believe Dr. Nguyen might be having technical difficulties, but she had joined the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith. May I have a motion to approve today's special agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, moved by Ms. Drew, seconded by Mr. Mylan. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none on the screen. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. First item on the agenda board is item two, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the HR report today?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Ms. Drew. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
You. Next board is a new business item. No action is being requested of us today. This is an informational item only today, but open for any questions if anyone has any questions on this item. This is an informational item requesting buyout of remaining leases from enterprise, enterprise fleet for some vehicles utilized by nutritional services department and the libraries, and one by communications department. So as a cleanup of, that we've been doing with our, our fleet of vehicles, this has come forward, being recommended to buy out remaining leases. So are there any questions? Or Dr. Stubblefield, is there anything else that, that we need to share on this item or questions from board members? Again, just informational purposes today.
Mr. Lopez.
No, we didn't.
Dr. Lynn had some questions, but she's having some trouble staying on. So I don't know what's going on.
Okay. Do you know, and she didn't send me any of the questions, Ms. Brownlee Page?
We, we spoke the other day, Mr. Lopez. The question call is the total, the total number of vehicles that we have in our fleet was one of them. And then we also discussed that at a high level because I didn't have actual numbers of how many vehicles we had in comparison to larger districts within our fleet. So I know that was two things she discussed with me during our 101 meeting.
Okay. And since this is informational only today, there's no action being requested. Dr. Stubblefield, maybe, and I can certainly follow up as well. Or Ms. Smith, if you could follow up with Dr. Nguyen, just to see if she had some specific questions pertaining to this. And she could maybe email those to Dr. Stubblefield. And then if there were other questions and any information, Dr. Stubblefield, that she asked, we can send that information to the full board before this comes back before us again. So unless she's on now to, to share any questions. But if we could, Leslie, if you could follow up and just see if there were other questions, if she could email them, and then we'll make sure to get responses to all board members. Ms. Brownlee Page, I, I thought I saw you trying to chime in. Did you have a question on this item?
Yeah, when will, when will we vote on this?
Um, go ahead, Dr. Stubblefield.
December 10th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? And we'll certainly follow up with Dr. Nguyen to make sure that she gets her questions submitted to everyone. So thank you. Well, with no further questions or discussion on this item, we're going to jump right into item number four, board discussion. First up, we have our budget discussion. So I will hand this off to, I believe, Dr. Stubblefield, or maybe she'll hand it off to, to someone else.
I am passing it off to Mr. Lilly and his members designated to speak about it. I would ask if you could share the screen if you're referencing something because I don't, everybody has the document pulled up.
Um, thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. I'll take that one. I'm going to have a presentation that Mr. Lilly and Ms. Kaiser and I have been working on with some informational items for the board today. So just a second while I get that pulled up on screen.
It up. I just will share, board, as we are starting to have the budget discussions, we wanted to make sure that later that one, we present high level est, rough estimates, depending on what the board were for the 25, 26 budget regarding revenue, remaining revenue neutral or not exceeding it. Because every, in every scenario that we share, we will have to make some adjustments within the budget. So I'll hand it off to Brad. But that's like the background regarding the information that we're sharing with you.
Yes, thank you. And just before we get into the presentation, I want to note that you're going to see several times throughout the slides, the words estimate or hypothetical. And that's because per the board's direction, we are starting this process earlier than past years. But that means we work with more of those estimates and hypotheticals than until we get closer to that normal timeframe. So the further that we get to the end of this school year, the more that we will be able to replace some of those estimates with actual numbers. But we have used our best judgment or best information available to us for those for right now. So getting started, we just, as we always do at the beginning of our budget process, for each year, we start with the board priorities that have been shared with us. As we start to have those discussions with buildings and departments and work through what needs they may have and also shaping their budgets around supporting the priorities that have been shared with us. So these are just reminders from the 23, 24 budget planning season, budget priorities or board priorities, excuse me, that have been shared with us. So these are just here for your discussion or to begin thinking about if you have ones that you would like to add or remove. Those would be good things for the board to be thinking about right now. So that before we have actual numbers, we can be spending some time on this part first. Give us a good course to set. And then as we get, again, that actual information, we'll be able to give you more specifics on the costs of different priorities, things like that. So slides two and three, again, are just for your information there. Moving into slide four, you've probably seen this slide before, and that's okay. But we did want to just differentiate between a few of the funds that we're going to speak about as we look at budget as a whole, but then also with the bond passing, that changes things just a little bit or maybe not so as people think so. We just want to make sure that we kind of clarify what things can be purchased with funding from different sources. So in our operational budget, you see there at the top, made up mostly of general fund and supplemental general, also referred to as the local option budget. So the general fund is funded by the state according to the state funding formula on a per pupil basis with extra weightings for things like at-risk, special education, ESL, and a few others. Supplemental general or the local option budget is funded primarily through local taxes. But because of Wyandotte County's, I guess, our economic situation compared to other school districts in the state, we are given a 68.68% state aid on that LOB amount. So that's going to be key when we start to look at what the value of one mil is to the district's budget. Because we have to keep in mind that while about 31% is actually on the local taxpayer, in any reduction scenario, we then would be giving up that extra 68.6% of the state aid that we get on top of that. For operational expenses or, excuse me, non-operational expenses, these are things that are related to maintaining, repairing buildings, facilities. We cannot use those for just daily operational expenditures, but for specifically defined items per state statute. So those funds are going to be held in capital outlay and then also include bond funds. So capital outlay is going to be for our day-to-day educational equipment, facilities, upkeep, repairs. Also, we can use some capital outlay dollars to help support salaries for maintenance and custodians who maintain the facilities. Bond funds cannot be used for those day-to-day type expenses. They must be dedicated to construction, remodeling, basically those larger projects that we've defined and notified the public of as part of the bond initiative. So going back to the general fund, we know that based on the state funding formula, out of the Gannon case, we've got a fairly good idea where the per pupil amount is going to end for next year. Pending the final Board of Education or State Board of Education confirmation of it, the estimate is $5,618 base per pupil, up from the 5378 for this fiscal year. So based on our estimated headcount, we would anticipate around 6 million in additional state funding for the general fund for next year, just from that, that general fund increase from the state.
Mr. Isner, I don't know if I can ask this now, but considering that we have a new president coming and what he plans to do, have we looked at or will we throw that in too? Because if he's talking about removing young people, then that does impact us. And are we at least considering that and looking into that?
I think we're, we're all kind of in the same boat right now of watching the news and, and waiting to hear more about what actually will happen versus what is said might happen. But we're, we're paying attention, we're watching closely. I don't think any major changes would happen necessarily day one that would affect our headcount. But then we're also allowed to use the prior years if we did have a large sudden decrease for, for any reason. So that gives us a little bit of a buffer there of time, at least to make changes if we had to. I saw Tracy on, she might be able to speak more to that prior year or year before scenario that we may have had to use in the past when we've had student count decreases. But the short answer is I think we're all kind of waiting to watch the same as you are, so.
Okay, well, I, I asked that because I'm, if we're, I know you, I know nothing is set in stone. This is all what we think might happen. But with the current person coming in, anything could happen. And I didn't know if we were at least trying to consider that and remember that as we plan. Because our enrollment could drop drastically if he does what he says he's going to do. I don't know. You know, we're hoping that it doesn't happen. But I didn't know if we're taking all that in consideration as well.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely being, being watched that. And I mean, there may be changes to the U.S. Department of Education. We, we've heard that too. It's just what actually materializes out of all of that talk right now is anyone's guess, unfortunately. But we, we definitely are ready to pivot if we would need to, so.
Wanted to make sure we got a backup plan. You know, we can't pretend like things aren't going to happen. Because this, with this guy, anything can happen.
Moving to slide six, this is just a reminder of mil rate changes that the district has already committed to as part of the bond initiative. So a, a movement of 1.5 mil from the library fund that would go towards bond and interest, and then one mil from capital outlay. So if you remember, we're capped at eight mils for the capital outlay fund. So that would be a maximum that we would be at for capital outlay of seven going into the next budget year. And that was to keep the, the no tax increase promise for that bond passing. The reason we note that is that that helps us narrow down that any additional mill levy reductions, if the board decided to make those, would likely need to come from that supplemental general fund or LOB. So that helps us be a little bit more specific on what the state aid decrease along with a mil reduction would be in actual dollars. So we get into that a little bit more in the next couple of slides. Helps to understand what the actual homeowner cost of one mil is. It's a very common misconception that one mil means $1 million. And couldn't blame anyone for thinking that, but it's, that is not what that actually means. So one mil, if we take just the first example in this table here of a $100,000 home for nice round numbers, the state then says in state statute that the assessed value of that home is 11.5% of the home's actual appraisal. So of that $100,000, then you have an assessed value of 11,500. One mil of taxes is $1 per thousand of assessed valuation. So we would get that a total cost to that homeowner of $11.50 per year, per mil on that $100,000 home. The cost of that per month, then, 96 cents per month. And then you can see that extrapolated up to $300,000 home, just as an example. But currently, our median home value within the USD 500 service area is still around 116,000 based on our most recent available data. So we've seen what the impact of one mil is on the homeowner within the taxing area. But the budget impact to the district then can be much different for that same one mil. The reduction to local taxpayers based on our previous year's valuation, which is the most recent data that we have, would be about $1.3 million altogether total to our budget. But then because of our LOB, whatever rate that we set for that, 68.68% of that is covered by state aid. The state aid on that would be 2.887 million. So for each mil of reduction, again, saves the taxpayers about 1.3 million. But the total budget impact that we have to consider is this 4.2 million at the bottom. To move to a hypothetical, again, hypothetical revenue neutral budget impact, the best estimate that I can give you on property evaluations right now is about a 6% increase. I got that number from Wichita State University's Office of Real Estate. They did a study recently of the state of Kansas by county, and they have put an estimate right now for Wyandotte County in 2025 of 6%. So using that number, we would anticipate then, if it came out exactly at that, it would be about 3.44 mils difference to remain revenue neutral. So in the tables below that, you can see to reduce 3.44 mils, the local tax difference there, 4.5 million, compared to the state aid that would basically be just left on the table, for lack of better words, of 9.9 million. So the total budget impact of that comes to, on the right there, 14.46 million. Now, the cost of that 3.44 mils, again, as examples for various home appraisal prices at the bottom there, ranging from around $3.30 per month for that $100,000 home, up to $9.89 a month for the $300,000 home. Remembering that our median home appraisal in our service area is that 116,000. So it should, on average, be on the lower end of that. So a budget scenario recap, we were asked to, as we begin planning this, have three scenarios in mind. One of what revenue neutral would mean, one of what a one mil reduction would mean, and then one of what it would be if the mil levy remains flat. So at this point, we are, it's, we don't have available what the actual total budget amount would be until, as I said, we get a little bit closer, we start to get some of that initial valuation data in, we'll be able to add more detail for you to that. But to recap the different scenarios, the revenue neutral would leave us with the state aid increase of that 6 million only. So about 14.4 million of funding would be declined with that decision. About 68.6% of that, again, being the state aid to 31% for the local taxes. For a one mil reduction, it would be about $4.2 million of funding declined with the same percentage breakdown. And then scenario three, mil levy remaining flat. We would have the increase from the state aid. But then for that actual, what the budget increase would be, we would really have to know what the final valuation number is going to come out to, to give you that. So we don't want to get ahead of ourselves with that. Current estimate, again, about a 6% increase is, is the best information we have at the moment. But this point, I know that's not maybe as much information as everyone would hope that we might have at this point. But as time passes, we're definitely going to continue to inform you as we get more and more information. So at this point, I would take any questions, knowing that we may need to take some of those down and get back to you after more research. But if there are some simpler ones, we can try to take those right away. So I open that back to Mr. Lopez and the, the board. If you've got any questions for us, otherwise Lisa will be doing the next portion of our presentation.
Mr. Isnard, board, I'd open the floor for any questions for Mr. Isnard regarding anything he presented or any questions, thoughts that you might have on this. Ms. Russell.
Yeah, first, just want to say thank you, Brad, for your presentation. A couple of thoughts that I have. First is, since the last time the board did the priorities, I believe that a lot of things have changed. Both, we no longer have ESSR dollars. We don't have some of the other avenues that have allowed us to accomplish some of the great work that's already happening. And so based on the will of the board, I would propose that as we go into this discussion, that we also update those board priorities. 2023, 2024 school year will be two years past when we get to the final decision on this budget update. And I, so I guess I'm advocating that the board reach consensus around whether or not we want to update our board priorities. And then the second thing that I wanted to say was, I think it started at slide four or five. I'd have to go back. I would like to see, maybe keep going the other way. It's about the mills. One more, one more. Yep. So I would like to propose that the board or the administration do develop a communication plan. I know that we've talked about always trying to continue to educate our community around what all of these budgetary pieces. And I think that transparency piece that was on our priorities, I thought this slide right here was very helpful in allowing folks to understand when we're talking about mills and when we're talking about all of the pieces of this budgetary process. I thought this was very helpful as well as, right now, it's still the estimated numbers. But for this slide that we're currently on, some type of communication plan about how we educate, like understanding mills and like how these things work. And so like putting it in our connection, putting it on the website, like how can we continue to be transparent, but also educate our community on what it is? Because I think the point that Brad made earlier, people assume because one mil sounds like 1 million, that that's what that means. And then, oh, I remember, it's also the slide that shows what 1 million, like while it reduces the local tax burden, it also costs our district so much more. And so I just thought those two pieces are really good, relevant pieces as we have this conversation and not being reactive to either side of the issue, but just educating our community. So that was also something that I was putting out there as like, hey, this is something we should be sharing. But also, how do we form a communication plan regardless of what direction we go? So, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. And just to, to piggyback or just and to see if we have an answer on, excuse me, on Ms. Russell's first question, I, I think that's an excellent observation about the board priorities. And don't, do we, Brad or Mr. Lilly or Dr. Stubble, can you? And don't, do we, Brad, or Mr. Lilly, or Dr. Stubblefield, can you remind me, don't we have to fill out as a board, updated, you all, yearly, don't we send out a survey to the board regarding our priorities, where we rank and/or review and add new priorities or take some off, some off during the budget process? Or is that a different process that I'm mixing it up? Just to help address Ms. Russell's first questions, I think that makes a lot of sense to be able to have that conversation.
We would have. Again, the finance theme with Ms. Hayes and Mr. Burden.
Dr. Stubblefield, you're cutting out a little bit there. I can, I, I can answer, you know, just to say that we have not done that this year yet. We have in past years per the board's direction, but I think that's as the board begins its discussions. That's the single greatest thing that you can do right now to help me put this together for you is to give us good direction on what your priorities are so that we can kind of drive everything starting at that point. So if that would be helpful, I'm certainly happy to help make that happen.
Yeah, sorry, Dr. Stubblefield, you were petting in and out pretty badly there. I, I, I think to Ms. Russell's point, it being two, a couple of years removed is for the, into the next budget for those priorities, that I think it might be helpful for us to at least revisit and have a conversation on those. Timeline wise, what would be, I mean, if we were going to make shifts in those priorities, when would you, to help you best, like, what, timing wise, when would that, you need more information?
I have not discussed specific dates with the team, so I don't know if I'm ready to commit to one for you at this point. Unless, Mr. Lilly, if you've got any thoughts on it, or I saw Tracy on there too. Otherwise, we may need to get back to you on a, a better timeline.
Yeah, I would like to get back with a more definitive timeline, but I would honestly say as we head into budget season and everything, to make sure that we're continuously moving in the right direction, I would anticipate by, you know, roughly right now, I don't want to, but mid-January.
So I, I wonder, thank you, and I, and I, you know, if you couldn't answer, that's perfectly okay, I wasn't expecting. But, you know, we do have another finance committee, I believe, on December sixth, so that's in a few weeks, a couple of weeks, so I wonder if we could at least have a preliminary or at least have a better sense or block off some time for the board to review and discuss some of those priorities. Ms. Russell, I don't know if you had some, some thoughts on how we could do that, but maybe that's something we could figure out offline in preparation for how best to have a conversation about those priorities. And again, this is a, I'm just picking up, piggybacking off of Ms. Russell's comment. Other board members, would you be interested in reviewing and discussing those priorities?
Yes.
I would also. Yes.
And I wonder if, because if I remember the process, it's been two years, so please, Tracy, tell me if I'm wrong. Tracy sent out something to us, we completed it. I wonder if, like, it's not a complete, like, I know since then, Mr. Mylan has joined us, but I wonder if it's a sharing those board priorities, current board priorities, and it's saying, like, do I agree with this still, or has, like, no? And then giving people the space to put any other priorities we should be considering, and then bring it back to your point and have that discussion. Not completely clean slating the entire thing, because some of the priorities may have not changed at all. But without trying to make it, I know that other process that we went through was quite a bit more extensive that we went through with Tracy, but maybe getting consensus that these are the same, and if there's anything that's not here, that at least we've at least reviewed it for this process.
I think that sounds perfectly reasonable for us. We can start with that and, and make a few tweaks and then get it out to you quicker that way and collect the feedback efficiently too, so appreciate that thought.
Thank you, Mr. Isnard and Mr. Lilly. And yeah, I think, Rachel, you're right, there was a, like a Google form or something where we ranked and that you all worked pretty hard on developing and shared with the board, so maybe we can do that. So, yeah, if you could maybe pull that together and we can at least have part of a conversation on that December sixth meeting. I think it's going to be combined with the, the Budget Committee in lieu of having a separate one later in December due to the, the break and all that, so seems like that would be a good time to do that. We can block off some time. Other questions for Mr. Isnard on, on this? I, I'll just echo Ms. Russell's second point about doing some education on the mill and, and whatnot, and the means, and looks like, I know at one point, some of us talked about holding workshops or sessions on like how to read your tax bill and what does it actually mean, you know, when we're doing this type of thing. So I think anything we can do to continue to educate, you know, our, our community on that could be helpful. Mr. Mylan?
Yes, I don't have a question, thank you for the opportunity, I just have a comment. I want to thank Mr. Bradley and Mr. Lilly and others who have the data they had presented as we go forward with this new year. And as Ms. Russell stated, the prioritizing of last year, I was not, not aware of, and I think it's a good idea for us and for the, to let the know the, the community and its constituents, all that involved, that what's, what, you know, what's important and where do we go? What do we know, where do we go from here? And, and I, I just think it's so, it's so very important to do that, so that's all I have. But thank you so very much, job well done and very informative, thank you.
Mr. Lopez, this is.
Yes.
And I would like for us to remember that our, that the community is still complaining, upset about their taxes, and again, it doesn't mean that they don't care. They're struggling too, that we keep all that in mind. And I'm not saying the kids don't deserve the best, but their parents deserve a break too. That's all I'm gonna say, because that's all I keep hearing. And that's the main thing, no matter where you campaign, when running for public office, that's what we heard continuously, and that's something I want to work on in the state legislature, because we gotta do something, because the people are hurting and struggling trying to pay these things. You start with the medium household income of a hundred thousand. Most of us, our homes aren't valued that, and they're struggling, that's all I want to say.
Absolutely, thank you, Ms. Bradley Page, for, I, I think that's something we, we need to continue to keep, keep in mind as, as we discuss budget options, and I think that's part of the reason why we're trying to start early with this. Ms. Tru, you have your hand up.
Yes, and one of the things I want to say is to make sure that when we look at the budget, then we look at a lot of the priorities that Dr. Stubblefield and her staff have tried to align with, making sure that we meet those expectations without going too far above or too far below, but making sure that we are going to do what we can to make sure that the students are going to be successful in how they're going to move forward within their field of education.
Absolutely, keeping, looking at those priorities, so thank you for that. Additional thoughts, questions for Mr. Isnard on the presentation? Again, this won't be your only opportunity, this is an ongoing budget conversation, so. Thank you, it's, so it sounds like we've got some, some things to, to, to bring to the next meeting on December sixth. Mr. Isnard, Mr. Lilly, hopefully can fill, Dr. Stubblefield in, I think she had to drop off for a minute as she tried to rejoin, but we can keep her updated on, on those next steps, so. With no other questions on that item, Mr. Isnard, was there anything else to cover there?
Actually, yeah, there are some things that we would like to go over. Lisa Walker is going to speak on the high density at risk and showing how we're aligned with state guidelines. So if, if we cannot, turn it over to her now.
All right, thank you, I am waiting for this to show on your screen, there we go. All right, so, good afternoon, Board, it's my pleasure today to be with you to give.
Can we make that a little bigger, please?
Yes, I absolutely can.
Okay.
How is that?
A little bit more, if you don't mind.
All right, yes, you bet. So, Board, you might remember that at the beginning of the school year, we brought to you our plan for making sure that we are spending our at-risk funds according to guidelines and also in the way that best meets the needs of our students. And so, we talked through the three different levels that we would be working through this school year. And so, today, I'm here to give you just an update at where we are regarding level two. And so, level two is using the KSDE at-risk salary percentage calculator to look at each teacher teaching and to identify the proportion of their classroom salary that is spent for the proportion of time that they are delivering evidence-based practices for students who need at-risk support. So we're going to share for you today what we have come up with as our templates for elementary, middle, and high school. We did convene department leaders from across various departments to come up with this first draft, and so I'm going to share that today for the teams. So what you're going to be looking at is the middle school spreadsheet, I'm going to use that as the example, and walk you through how our team has looked at each teacher, teaching at each grade level in each of the subject areas, and talked through how much time each week those teachers would be using then a strategy from the evidence-based practices list that is approved by KSDE to spend towards, or to use at-risk funding. So now, I'm going to, I apologize for that. Let me get back to my spreadsheet here, is that large enough to see? Everybody good? All right.
Can you make it a little bigger, please?
I can, I'm at five hundred percent, Ms. Page, I don't know that I can go any larger on my screen.
Well, for future, can it be in the library and at least?
Yes.
Give us an opportunity to make it larger so we can see it.
Yes, I believe it.
Ms. Page, it is attached to board docs.
Oh, okay, I didn't know. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, all right. So on the screen, you can see that the team went through, and we looked at the first teacher that is teaching a subject area at each grade level. So you might see on my screen, Teacher A, that's teaching English Language Arts at sixth grade. And keep in mind that there may be Teacher A, Teacher B, and Teacher C at each of these grade levels, because we oftentimes at a middle school have two to three teachers that are teaching a subject at each grade level. So Teacher A just represents the very first teacher that's teaching this subject at each grade level, all right? And so, what we did was, the first thing the team looked at was, what time during the school day, based on the instructional schedule, are all teachers engaged in intervention time? And we looked first at those times throughout the day, based on the entire school schedule that this would be happening. So you'll notice in the column for Approved Best Practice One, that all the teachers, regardless of whether they teach English Language Arts, Math, Science, or Social Studies, and regardless of what grade level they're teaching, all teachers are engaged in intervention practices with students using Lexia, and that is happening during the morning when time. So that is the first approved best practice. Then, we went on to think about at each grade level in each content area, as we implement our high-quality instructional materials, there are certain evidence-based practices in each of these high-quality instructional routines that teachers would be engaged in specific approved best practices. So you'll notice in Approved Best Practice Column Two, you see a little bit of variance because the selected approved best practice is going to change based on the content area. So in English Language Arts, we're going to see small room instruction as an intervention for about seventy-five minutes per week versus math, where we're using iXL for about a hundred minutes per week, because we know we need a little bit more time and attention in math. Then, Approved Best Practice Three, you see scaffolding instruction, and that is consistent throughout all content areas and grade levels. And that's because we know that forty-one percent of our students are English language learners, that's about nine thousand students of our total population. And so, we know that scaffolding instruction is an evidence-based strategy that is used often for English language learners in all content areas as they are working to acquire the language as well as the content. Then, Approved Best Practice Four is our second step, social emotional learning curriculum, which at the middle school is introduced with students during their FA time each week. And so, each student, or each teacher is working with students through either second step or restorative practices. And then, the last approved best practice for a middle school that's been selected thus far is Avid. We know that teachers are working through those Avid frameworks, WICHER strategies, study skills for about fifty minutes per week. And so, that is where we ended up with that amount. So if you keep going on over to the far right then, you can see that for each teacher, we have four hundred and eighty minutes of our instructional day each day, and of course, that's five days a week, there is a little bit of difference on Wednesdays. But the total amount of time per week would be eleven hundred twenty minutes. And you can see then the total number of minutes that we have calculated for each grade level and each content area, for the time that a teacher would spend during the week utilizing those evidence-based practices. And then, of course, we have the percentage then of their salary, their total salary, that could be supported through at-risk funds, because that's the percentage of their day in which they are engaged in these evidence-based practices to support students who might be at risk in some of the areas on some of the eleven indicators that the state uses for their guidelines. So I will pause there to see if there are any questions you might be holding about what I've shared so far.
Let's see, Dr. Winn's hand up, Dr. Winn, please.
Try that. Try that, okay, I can hear me. There's too much feedback.
Trying to get that figured out there, hopefully we can get her online to, to share any addition, any thoughts. Thank you, Ms. Walker, for sharing any other questions.
Dr. Winn, if you can hear us, you can type your questions in the chat. If you can't get your sound to work, you can type it in the chat, and we can respond.
Ms. Russell.
I apologize if I missed it. So we're working through Tier Two, and this is that document here for the Tier Two at risk, if I understood correctly. We already worked on Tier One. I guess I just needed some clarity, because I thought part of this process was also to reduce the number of dollars that we're just spending on staff time for at-risk programming.
So. So we're not really talking about tier two. In this case, we're talking about three different levels that we're working through in order to spend our funding according to how the state says we can. And so level one would be, you know, those staff positions that are working 100% of their time with students in at-risk programs. So you can see on the screen here, that might be alternative education programs, McKinney-Bento staff. We could also count 100% of the time our summer school instruction, extended learning before and after school programs because that is 100% of the time in level one. Staff members spending, working with 100% of students who are at risk during that time. Then level two is kind of a second round of looking at the funding. So in this case, the state does allow us to look at the percentage of time that a teacher is spending on tier two instruction. So if we go back to that sheet that I was sharing, you can see then that in a sixth-grade ELA English class, about 36% of their school day is spent on that tier two instruction after they've delivered the core instruction. And the state does allow us to look at a teacher's day in that way and then to use at-risk funding to pay for that portion of their salary.
So just to add one more layer of clarification, Rachel, prior, most districts were just saying we're paying for teacher salary because all of our students are at risk. In the level two, we're being explicit. So if they're doing it 25% of the time, we're, we would be paying for 25% of their salary versus their whole salary because we're tying it to specific approved resources. So that's the adjustment that we're making, which in turn will reduce the amount that we're just allocating for salaries.
Okay. Thank you both. And I think I saw Dr. Wen's questions.
Yes, and I would defer to Dr. Fernandez Flores, who I believe is on the call. The question is, do teachers prepare lesson plans that document the times during the day that they are teaching specific evidence-based practices like Lexia? I do know that Lexia is scheduled in the instructional day, so that is on everyone's schedule for the day and for teachers. And then the teachers are using the high-quality instructional materials. But I would defer to Dr. Fernandez to add details if she can at this time, or we can get back with you regarding how that is transferred into teachers' specific lesson plans.
The expectations for classroom instruction in regards to Lexia, when time, that percentage of time of classroom time was designed specifically for the tiered intervention with Lexia. So we absolutely know that that is happening at that time with Lexia. With regards to the other content areas, we are relying on the guaranteed and viable curriculum to be executed. And that is monitored at the building level by principals. And the expectation is that the that the adopted resource is being used with fidelity and the instructional routines are embedded. Our content PD days are focused on helping teachers integrate the instructional routines as specified by the materials. With regards to lesson plans as concrete objects, that is at the discretion of the building principals are the ones that determine exactly what that looks like and the accountability level is there. But the expectation is that the materials are being used and followed as outlined in the guaranteed and viable curriculum documents.
Mr. Lopez, I just wanted to make sure I heard her correctly. Did she say that it's up to the principals to document that, to check it, to make sure that they're doing that in their lesson plan? I just want to make sure I heard it correctly.
Yes, she said, this is Dr. Stubbleford. I can answer that. Yes, she said that it's how the principals track that and make sure that teachers are carrying out the expectations. That is, that is the principal's responsibility.
And they check this weekly? How often is it checked?
And there, we can get the specific information to you, but it varies by school, by level, in just the cadence of how they are doing their walkthroughs and those kind of things.
Okay. And and it's, they have it in a journal or booklet. If someone were to ask to see it, they could pull it up at any time?
If through their walkthroughs and DigiCoach, they could pull up what they observed. They also, when they do their observation for evaluations, they can. There are some principles who do require certain lesson plans be submitted on different rotations. But again, it, but yes, they would have evidence of them doing the checks. They should. I, they should have evidence.
And then, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Page. I was just going to add, because I think it relates to your question, Ms. Brownlee Page. Dr. Wen put into the chat, thank you. Is the monitoring documented? Expectations need to be documented. Rest assured that another audit will happen. So just, I think it was on topic, so just wanted to share that comment and question around monitoring, monitoring being documented from Dr. Wen. Sorry, Ms. Brownlee Page, go ahead.
No, because I just want to make sure. We're spending a lot of money on things. And we need to make sure that they're actually being done. And I don't know if we can look at scores to see if it correlates. Are the people actually doing it? You know, it's easy to say you're doing it, but then you need to be able to document. And you say they're doing that, but just need to make sure that it's being done on a consistent basis.
Well, I would be happy to add information here for the team. And then if any other members want to jump in, I would invite that. But I do know that the executive directors of schools at all level, they're working with principals and having their cohort meetings, looking through their walkthrough data as well as their outcome data. So there is an expectation for a certain number of walkthroughs, but certainly they move beyond that to think about what subject areas or grade levels might need to continue to look at enhancing what's happening in the classroom. And so there may be increased walkthroughs in those areas based on what the data is showing. And then the curriculum and instruction team also does walkthroughs as well as some other departments. Our multilingual education services group does walkthroughs to look and see that scaffolding instruction is occurring. So there are a variety of walkthroughs occurring and data is being reviewed to absolutely make sure that what we're saying we need to be doing, we are in fact doing that.
And the last thing I'll add to this is that also any online resource, we can actually pull the data to see who's logging in, when they log in, and how, like, how long students are in those specific types of interventions. So we have a lot of ways to cross, to look and see like what's happening. We're just saying it varies a little by level, size of building, and those kind of things. But we can pull that information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions? Thoughts for Ms. Walker? Thank you, Ms. Walker. We'll look forward to continued information on this. Mr. Lilly, was there anything else on the the initial budget conversation?
No, not on the budget conversation.
Okay. Thank you, Board. As you think through, and again, those, all of those documents we covered today are on Board Docs. So if you haven't had a chance to review them, hopefully you'll get a chance to. I know sometimes on the screen, they're a little small, so you can pull them up on your laptop or desktop. So with that, we'll move to item B, just to to hear a little bit about the bond preliminary financing analysis. Mr. Lilly.
Yes, we've got Dustin Abey present, who will be going over the bond preliminary financing analysis, sharing that information with you. He is on his cellphone, actually. So Brad will be in charge of putting the presentation up for view as well. And again, this is in the agenda, too.
Thanks, Steve. Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Happy Friday. Mr. Lopez, Board of Education, good to be with you again. Congratulations on a successful outcome earlier this month at the ballot box. Really nice outcome for the school district and students. Yeah, I thought it'd be helpful just to revisit the plan of finance. Obviously, we talked about this prior to the Board of Education calling the election back in August. You know, I'll make a comment here because I think it's somewhat relevant to maybe the conversations you were having in regard to the budget and some of the mill levy sensitivities that that people communicate and you're hearing within the community. You know, as as we all talked about, the, one of the primary objectives of this bond election was making sure that the mill levy would not increase relative to this project. And I think that is a, it's a, it's a big commitment by the district and an important commitment to maintain and keep with voters. So as we've done many times over the years relative to projects or refinancings, I think it's it's really important as we think about the next steps from a financing perspective that we really keep in mind, our primary objective here is to ensure that we, that the mill levy does not increase relative to this project. Number one, so first priority. And then number two is we maximize the dollars available for projects. So keeping those two things in mind. And Brad, you can flip to number, page number two if you like. It's really just a summary of the financial plan. And again, I think you have all this on Board Docs as well. So you'll notice in the very top, in kind of what our objective is, obviously, that the biggest, the biggest cost, right, any bond issues, interest cost. So I would tell you, as we think about interest rates, and there's a, there's a slide on the next page, which kind of gives you a historical trend of where rates are. I'm going to point out a couple of things which I think are very relevant. I do think going into '25, I would hope we have some market stability. I would say this month, in light of the election, it's been probably a little bit more volatile than maybe we expected. I would say the one, the one, I shouldn't say concern, but the one risk I think that's out there is relative to rates going higher and potentially rates going higher because of renewed inflationary concerns. So keeping those things in mind, we want to be very proactive in making sure we're monitoring market conditions and putting the district in the best position possible to be successful and making sure we're securing those interest rates, reducing or eliminating any interest rate risk and making sure we can meet the no-mill-levy commitment to voters. So so really, really important as we think about timeline and objectives. What you'll notice is if based upon current markets, you'll see a bullet point there. We are estimating about, in the current market environment, around, around four, I would say, it's probably about four and a half to 4.7% today. Again, as we've talked about, it's a 30-year bond financing. So again, there's, there's the bond interest rate component, number one. But there's also the reinvestment rate, number two. So think about short-term interest rates, okay? So short-term interest rates are still elevated relative to the, to the, to the Fed action, the Fed funds rate. It actually provides a district the opportunity to reinvest those funds during the construction process. Keep in mind that investment earnings that accrue during the construction of the project can be used for one of two things. They can be used for projects, number one, okay? Or they can be used for mill levy management. So just to give you an estimate, again, we're not spending all $180 million at one time, right? Those are going to be spent over projects over multiple years. But during that time period, if we earn a certain amount of interest while those funds are sitting idle, it can provide a meaningful benefit to the school district relative to, again, whether it's mill levy management or added dollars that can be used for projects that were approved by voters. Okay, so you'll notice there, the, the current estimated investment earnings is a little over $11 million. Again, it's $11 million in addition to the 180 million. So again, it gives the district some flexibility there as I'm sure as you went through that process, right, to identify projects to get to the scope to 180 million, I'm certain that there were probably projects that left off that list. Those investment earnings could be used for some of those things that maybe were were not prioritized as part of the $180 million project, if that's something the board elects to do. In addition to that, right, so keeping in mind, like we did in 2016 with that election, right, when the bonds were sold, there was, there was premium that was generated from the bond sale. I don't know exactly what that number could be. That's really going to be a market-driven number and not known until the bond sale occurs. But for those of you on the board back in 2016, you remember that the premium that was generated at that time was used for both mill levy management as well as for additional projects. So again, that's something that we'll be monitoring closely as we, we get to the point of selling bonds and finalizing interest rates. But there's another component there that could add some value and could increase the dollars available for the district to making sure that you're maximizing what you're getting from a project perspective and delivering the results that were communicated to voters. A few other pages here, and again, I won't go through that interest rate page. So the next page there, Brad, is the interest rate page. Again, just to give you some perspective. So from, again, conflationary thing is a thing that we're watching closely. You know, I think probably what you've heard right now, right, is the Fed may not be as focused on lowering the Fed funds rates. That commentary leads us to believe that there's some concerns about kind of what inflation looks like as we get further into 2025. If inflation is not controlled, we think that rates go up fairly higher than where they are today. The other component, which I think is relevant, and again, I don't know the outcome here, but we so again, maybe let me take a step back. So bonds, right, bonds are issued on a tax-exempt basis, right? Which means for the investors who buy those bonds, those bond, the interest they earn on those bonds is exempt from both state and federal income tax, okay? Because they're exempt from state and federal income tax, investors who buy those bonds provide entities who issue those bonds, like school districts, a lower interest rate. There is some preliminary talk at the federal level related to extending tax cuts that were implemented in 2017. There's obviously a cost to implementing and to renewing some of those tax cuts. One of the things at the federal level that has been discussed is in order to offset the, the cost of the extension of the tax cuts, the tax exemption is, is something that the federal government will likely look at to eliminate. So again, tax-exempt bonds cost the federal government because the people earning interest aren't paying taxes on that investment, on those, on the interest earnings. And so if they were to eliminate that, that would require all governmental entities who normally would have issued tax-exempt bonds, that would force them to issue what we call taxable bonds. And taxable bonds, because they're not exempt from, from federal and state income tax, come at a higher interest rate. So ultimately, by the federal government maybe taking that action at some point down the road, it would increase the borrowing cost to school districts or to counties or to cities it would increase the borrowing cost to school districts or to counties or to cities or to hospitals. And so something that we're monitoring very closely, we feel that it's a something that we don't want to put the district in a position to where that could be a possibility. And now you're left with an interest rate that probably is closer to 6% than in the mid 4%. So something that we're very concerned about and watching closely. Again, we want to make sure we're putting the district in the best position possible relative to meeting that commitment, which obviously is is delivering the lowest cost of funds, which is via tax exempt bonds. So there's a there's more information there that you probably care to know, but there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes that I think are very relevant to the school district. We're monitoring them very closely and want to make sure that we're being proactive and making sure that we're not jeopardizing or putting the district at risk. One more page, Brad, again, I again, valuation history, we talked about this a lot. State aid, I won't go through this in detail, just something that we're providing as as backup information. Again, valuation growth, I know it's all as part of your budget strategy is really a lot of that depends on just valuations and growth relative to that on an annual basis. Just to give you some perspective, about 13% has been the valuation over the three years. Again, I don't think that's sustainable long term. I think we get back down to more of a historical average over time. But again, you can kind of see what the 10 and the five and the 10 and five year average is as well. Mill levy history, again, I've commented on this a number of times in front of the board. I just think you the board's been very fiscally responsible. Really, you've looked back over 10 years, right? Over 10 years, that mill levy has been very consistent. Obviously, the cost of education's changed over that time period. Yes, so have valuations. But again, districts done a really good, really nice job of fiscal stewardship stewardship in light of a lot of changes, both at the state level and local level. And then one more page, Brad, there you'll see just the plan of finance. Again, there's a lot of numbers here, so I apologize for this being so small. If you're looking at this on the screen, I have a hard time looking at it as well. But again, the the information is very detailed. It's in the board packet. Again, the the plan here again is obviously making sure we can meet that mill levy commitment to voters, which again, the bond interest mill levy goes up 2.2.5 mils and that's being offset right by the library mill levy going down, right? And also capital outlay going down as well. So really, really critical as we get into budget that that's part of the financial plan that was communicated to voters to ensure that we could get to the 180 million dollar bond amount. What I really like, again, you'll you'll notice a column on there called fund balance, which is your second column from the right. Again, we we want to make sure we're putting the district in a really good position long term to be able to manage not only the mill levy in this fund, but also other district funds. So keeping a solid and healthy fund balance is really, really important for for the Board of Education and administration to to maintain and think about long term mill levy management and mill levy flexibility for for district operations. And then and then lastly, just wanted to comment here on timelines a little bit, again, thinking through what this looks like and how we put the the district in the best position to be successful relative to delivering the results communicated to voters. Yeah, obviously, this is just purely information here today. What we'd like to do is we would have a resolution in front of the board at the December 10th meeting for action and and that auction item would start the process to allow us to prepare all the documents necessary to put the district in the position to lock in the rates by, I'm going to say by by the middle of January to end of January at the earliest, assuming number one, the market's favorable. And number two, we get all the documents prepared and ready in an orderly manner. We would then have potentially information to share at a finance committee meeting in late January, number one. But number two then is have a formal resolution in front of the board at the January 28th meeting, which at that point, it's it it finalizes all the rates. And then we'd be in a position to close and deliver funds the end of February. And again, by the end of February, then, once the funds were available, we would then have an investment plan in place. So as soon as the funds were delivered to the school district, we'd have an investment plan in place to making sure that we're capturing and maximizing the investment earnings the district would be earning during the during the the period of construction. Mr. Lilly, Mr. Lopez, I'm gonna I'm gonna pause there. That's a lot of information. I know that you you have a pretty hard stop here at 2:30, but just want to just pause and stand for questions.
Thank you, Dustin. A lot of information there, board. Open the floor for questions if there are any questions or comments.
I did, Mr. Lopez, have one question.
Can you hear me?
Please, Mr. Mylett, go ahead.
Okay, I appreciate your effort here, Mr. Avey, and good good presentation. A quick question is, you mentioned just two moments ago, we the district has done a good stewardship in 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 maintaining what we're doing. So what what does that compare it to and how did you come to that assessment and and the conclusion you came to 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 make that statement to say we've done a good, we've done good stewardship?
Yeah, I think I think what I really look at is just mill levy management, right? So again, I think about all the funds that the Board of Education manages to operate the district. And you really think about the 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 changes in in the in funding formula, you think about what special education and the impact that has on districts today and how that's changed over 10 years. You think about what you've done from an operating standpoint. You think about you went from 30 to 33%. I think maybe I think that was maybe three years ago that occurred, right? So you're you've been trying to maximize state aid dollars and you've been you've been trying to do all those things with while staying within the existing mill levy. I think that's really hard to do, right? So that that was my intent and related to my comment and my assessments around that comment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mylett, additional thoughts, questions? Here and then, thank you, Dustin, for the thorough information, board. I just make sure you continue to review the information that was provided today in that timeline as there will be some additional information and action items coming our way. So we want to make sure that everyone is duly informed and has what you need whenever we make any decisions on this. So thank you again, Dustin. I'm sure we'll be having further conversation on this, but thanks for all your help so far.
Yep, thanks, everyone. Have a nice weekend.
You as well. All right, the next item on the agenda, board, is item C regarding board travel. Just wanted to have some informational information here. I'm not sure who's going to lead the discussion on this item necessarily. This is Mr. Correll. I see you coming off on on the screen, so I'm guessing that is you. Just to share some information regarding to help make things a little bit more efficient for board members as we travel and consistent. So, Mr. Correll, hand it off to you.
Sure. So what we've come up with, and I've been working with Leslie on this, so some forms for, you know, information for her so she can set up the trips and information for board members while they're on the trips to be able to differentiate, you know, what's a business expense, what's a personal expense and and answer some questions that have come up over time. And so the the first form that's on there is this board member travel information form. What this is going to do is give Leslie what she needs, the board clerk, what she needs to set you all up with travel. We are going to implement, and you see section seven there, if you look at the board member travel information form, gonna set you all up with travel advances. So, you know, there's no question as to, you know, what you're all spending the money for. We'll give you the money that is allocated by the state, you know, we set that at $68 per day. And then you guys can spend it on the food that you want to. You're entitled to this as you travel and that's section seven four, there's a form here, if I can share my screen, that Leslie's gonna fill out. Okay, so hold on a second. Yeah, I can't get to it, but that's okay. So the the travel information, you've seen it. I don't know, it's not in the board layer or it's not on this agenda item, but you all have seen it. It's an Excel spreadsheet that's filled out that shows the allocation of that $68 that you all are entitled to. This way, you all don't have to keep track of receipts or worry about it if you're spending it on something you shouldn't be or anything like that. It'll be money that's, you know, given to you prior to the trip. And you all can just spend that $68 on however you want to. However, there is some deductions that take place on that. If meals are provided by, I know I've got a little bit of time here, meals are provided by the organizers as part of the registration for the trip. So and I'm rolling through this fast, but I know I've got a limited time. So anybody have any questions on the travel advance?
I'll just preface, Mr. Correll, thanks for for going through this. I know you're going through it kind of quickly, board. There's no real action necessary today, and I think we can always bring this back to finance committee on December 6. In fact, I'd probably encourage that just to to make sure that everyone feels comfortable and that we we've reviewed. I think today's kind of a chance, board members, for you to kind of have had time to look at this, these documents and this process that Wayne and the team have put together. So appreciate that, Mr. Correll, but but board, please know that you'll you'll have more opportunity to have discussion likely at the next budget and finance meeting. But we wanted to.
Come up with your questions, right? Come up with your questions, things that you have questions about. And I'll be happy to answer them, give you more detail on them and more information about how it all works. Okay?
Mr. Lopez, I don't have a question. I have a comment and I've expressed this to Dr. Stubblefield. And I just feel like some of us did not follow the proper protocol. So you're changing the whole system and all we need is people to do their job and enforce what the rules are. I this bothers me because there've been some things that have not gone on by the book. And all we have to do, if we had people in place and if it's their job to do it, then they need to do it. This is ridiculous. This is just my comment because it's almost like you had people who don't follow the rules. So now we gotta change it for everybody instead of people standing up doing what they're supposed to do. That's my comment. I don't have a question.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment as well. That goes full circle. And so we can take this one offline. I do think we need to talk about it later. But we had board members that were also inconvenienced because the process was not followed.
And I and I and I think we should pause here. I will say, Ms. Page, just for clarity, we didn't change anything. We're just putting in our writing so everybody has the same understanding. Nothing was.
And then that's what I was gonna get into.
Yeah, yeah.
We're providing you with guidance is is what these documents are.
And I respect that, but I feel that it was clear then, some people chose to do something different. That's just my opinion.
We also had board members that had no place to stay because we do not have a good process. So this one needs to be taken offline, but I think it's very one sided, the comments that are being made.
Okay.
And I'm not referring to that. I'm talking about some other stuff that went down that shouldn't have gone down.
Yeah, so I I will recommend, Mr. Lopez, if we can go to, yeah. But I I think every we hear everybody's perspective, but I just want to be clear around. It wasn't, nothing was changed. We're just ensuring that everybody has the same information so that we're clear on that. And we can, if there are further questions or discussions about these items, I will suggest we do put it on the December 6th meeting. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Correll. Sorry, you were gonna say something.
Anyway, there's a checklist here that helps with pre-planning travel, pre-travel planning, the travel preparation. You know, what's supposed to be done during travel and post-travel tasks that will help mitigate some of the problems that have been experienced in the past. We, you know, it's essentially a checklist for the board clerk to make sure that there's nobody without a room. And, you know, it'll just be a procedure that we follow when we're setting up your travel to make it as painless as possible on you all while you're on the trips.
Wayne, and I just had a question of clarity. So with regard to the meal per DM, if the board wanted, we could, because I think the reducing based on meals provided, like, that gets a little wonky. Because also there have been three different forms that have been shared around. And so I wondered for the sake of board clarity around it's what's allowed and what's not allowed. If I don't like a meal, that means I have to pay for it on my, like, I wanted to get clarity around if we said, we're just saying it's $68 per day, that is something that the board could do. Regardless of the meal difference, because we could play the game about like when you go different places, it costs different for dinner or those types of things. Like, how do we avoid any of the conflicts that unfortunately, like, as it relates to meal? Also, if I turn in a receipt and I had two of one thing, but I could only have one, like, whose business is it to judge what someone got? So I want to, I wanted to clarify that.
Well, yeah, I mean, it would be up to the board as far as, you know, if there's any exceptions to the rules. You know, there'll be a process for that, but you all need to agree on it since you are the board. And what we're just essentially doing here is doing the interpretation of the State of Kansas Travel Expense Handbook and putting it on a document that provides you all with clarity. If there's any exceptions that you want to do, say for meals that are provided by the organizers that you don't want to partake in, we will have to establish a process for you all to make that exception. And so, yeah, if you just send me an email on how you want it to read, and there's Brad, he's popped in.
Wayne, I just wanted to jump in real quick and just add that the policies about reimbursements for business related expenses are also really rooted in IRS guidelines. So any type of reimbursements above and beyond what has kind of painstakingly been the work that's been done around that per DM would be probably taxable income. So there would be things like 1099s or W2s that would have to be issued if if those types of decisions were made. Just informational.
Mr. Isnar, thank you, Mr. Correll. I think, so I think there's still a few questions regarding process. And again, just for clarity, nothing has been shifted or changed. It's just a different way to make sure that there's a checklist and and we're following the process that is laid out. Nothing's shifted. So unless there's.
Just one more thing.
Yeah.
I didn't, we weren't. So on section four, ground transportation, in my experience, I've never seen a rental car be set up for board members. We've all utilized Ubers or those types of thing. Wayne, I wondered if in this section or what clarity needed to be provided there. I think I use the example, I got the board Uber, lots of Ubers in one location and no one asked me a single question about it. I took a couple of Ubers this time and I got asked about it. And so I just would like clarity around, are there rules around Uber transportation and how many Uber transportation? Like, I just want to make sure that that's also clearly shared in here. So, you know, like, it's the transportation to and from. And then one conflicting thing it said is like in that document around personal and business is like if we're going to a meal that's offsite with a partner, it's a if it's not a part of the conference, it's not a business expense. And so like even those things. a business expense. And so, like, even those things like that clarity and those two documents would be helpful. So.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
I will, I will do what I can to clarify. Okay. And then also, I know we're we're over, but I might add some information about combining official and personal travel costs too, because I've I've heard that come up and I've got something written, but I'm gonna incorporate it into the document. And then I'll I'll send that to Leslie. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Russell. Thank you, Mr. Correll. Yep. So I think board continued to review the the documents that were shared. Again, just we would just want to create some consistency there. We will pick this back up, review those December sixth, it sounds likely for further review. Appreciate everyone's input and feedback on that. I know we're coming close to our scheduled end time. I'm just looking across the screen to see. I know we had one board member who had to drop. We've got one quick item D, professional development. Ms. Russell, looking at you, is there something that we needed to pull here on this item that needs some immediacy?
I I don't know that it needs immediacy, but I believe that it has been brought to you and I's attention multiple times. And so in an attempt to make sure that no one feels like we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. I don't know. I I'm conflicted about it, to be honest. I think it's something that could be be held over, but again, to get agreement from the full board may take longer than five minutes. And so I'm not really sure how to proceed at this time. But it is an item that has been requested multiple times.
And I'm trying to look for the email with the
Mr. Lopez, while you're looking, Ms. Russell, it may be beneficial to just share what it is and then you all can, if it's not immediate, at least everybody will know what it is. And I'm not sure what it is. And then you can put it on the next agenda because then they all have the background. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, and I'm happy to give that I had planned intended to give kind of the feedback. And so board, I just wanted, so during our last evaluation section, as well as other conversations with the board, we've talked about professional development for the board clerk. We previously in our last budget cycle, we put in a budget for the board clerk to attend KSB workshops. Since then, we've learned that those workshops do not have a financial obligation. There have been multiple requests to myself, Mr. Lopez, as well as Ms. Page, to be able to attend additional professional development opportunities, including the past state association conference, the national conference in Cube, at Cube. And those requests were not honored due to the initial intent of the budgeted funds, as well as feeling as though if the board clerk attended either of those conferences, that it would take up a bigger part of the budget and not leave funding for anything else. Since then, there has been lots of conversations around allowable expenses and what we deem appropriate professional development opportunities for the board clerk and what the approval process for the board clerk to attend that. I think, me personally, while I we meet with the board clerk every week, it it can put us in a hard spot between Randy and I to be the sole decision makers around that. If that is the direction of the board, we can continue to go that route. However, there have been other conversations and things that have happened that I just want to make sure that we have the full clarity as well as direction from the board of how best to move forward. And so yeah, that's kind of what why this item was put on the agenda. And, yeah, I really think we need some guidance from the board around what we're willing to support as well as what the clear approval process for who gets to say those items are approved. So.
It's Russell. Appreciate that. And so, board, I I think that, so you heard from Ms. Russell, just some of the questions that that we've been working with in terms of that professional development request. So I don't believe there are any coming before the December sixth meeting. I know we don't want to continue to punt things down the road, but for the sake of time, you'd be willing to to have this discussion at the next board. I think we just need some clarity on board members, if you're, if you, the process of how you would like, Ms. Russell and I and Ms. Brownlee Page, as we receive those requests, how to move forward on that. So.
Mr. Lopez, I would also like a chance to speak at the December sixth meeting as well in regards to the my professional development.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. So hearing that, and it sounds like it's gonna be a little bit longer conversation than we don't want to rush the the conversation or rush Ms. Smith's comments. Board, would you be agreeable with moving this item to December sixth Finance Budget Committee meeting? If you, if there's any disagreement, please share. Right. So we'll we'll move forward with that on December sixth as well. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, I would also like to be able to speak in regards to the the travel that Wayne and I had been working on, the board travel documents. And so I just wanted to share that as well. I would have some additional comments in regards to board travel.
Thank you. We will have that item on the December sixth meeting as well. So we'll make sure that we hear from you at that at that time as well. Thank you. Okay, board, I know we are over time. I would maybe just ask for, if you're able, if folks have to drop off, I want to respect that as well. So let me know. I would ask if there is we do have one executive session, and I would just ask for ten minutes of your time, if that would be acceptable. If if are there folks who cannot extend for ten minutes from the board? Please let me know right now. So if we don't have the appropriate number of board members.
I could extend, but I can't go over ten.
Okay. And anybody else that cannot do cannot extend? Okay, see anybody? So with that, would entertain a motion to recess the executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of all parties involved for ten minutes going in at ten forty-three to include just the board members.
I'm sorry, you mean two forty-three?
Yeah, I'm sorry, two. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Drew seconded by Mr. Mylan. Questions or discussion? Board, I did email you a separate Zoom link, and it's also a calendar invite to your Gmail, so you can look at it via either via email or on your calendar. Okay, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.
Mylan, Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Wayne. Maxine Drew.
Yes. Sorry, Ms. Drew. Thank you.
Dr. Wayne commented, yes. Staff, you're we're dismissed because when they come back, they all return. So staff can log off.
All right, motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second, sorry.
Seconded. Moved by Ms. Drew, seconded by Ms. Russell. Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Randy Lopez.
Yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Wayne.
Thank you.
You, Ms. Smith. Okay, thank you, board, for the extra time. Thank you to all of our staff. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great weekend and a great holiday if we don't see each other before next week. Thank you all.
Happy Thanksgiving. Bye.
All right, bye.